Seeing none of motion for approval. Dina Horst, second. Jean Clifford, all in favor, please raise your hand. Looks like a nine zero to me also. Okay, thank you very much, Board, and we'd like to welcome Commissioner Watson to the podium for your monthly report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And good morning, everyone. It's good to see all of you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. I want to thank all of you that have been joining me. We seem like been crisscrossing the state from as far west as Wesken, which I don't think Jean would be correct if we're in Wesken, no one disputes that we're in western Kansas, I don't think at that moment. We're pretty close to Colorado and Dina joined me up north and Amanda Peterson and I were in Cheney yesterday, last night, talking with their board and some patrons about early childhood. So I just want to thank you for all your efforts as we go forward. I had the, so it's just been a pleasure to spend some time with young people in most of these visits. So from small schools like Dina and I were in in Lynn and Hanover to large school districts, Wichita and Kathy and I were at the Wichita Catholic Diocese at Cape. But they all have our dreams and aspirations and the hopes and I know as you, we take this job extremely serious. And it's, and we're going, I'm going to share with you some data of some things that we're making progress on, but we have a lot of work to go to. And I, I think what's challenging sometimes for all of us is teaching is an extremely hard profession and most teachers, the vast majority, as you know, get into it because they want to impact a young person and change that. And so they take that home with them and they wrestle with all these, with all these things. And so to have a conversation with any educator about, wow, you're doing really well and acknowledging that and we can compare to other entities, but that there's work still to be done, there's lots of work to be done to get where we want to go. That's a hard balance, I find, because I want to so much honor the work that we're doing, yet we still have work to be done. And it's, it's, it's being done in school districts and I just appreciate the educators that are leading that effort going forward. So we're working, you know, through these four broad concepts. Again, as we were talking last night in Cheney, early childhood was saying, well, you know, Randy, developmentally, some kids just aren't at the same level at age five as other kids. Yes, it's true at 16, it's true at nine, it's true at five, but when you organize everyone as we have for over 100 years and say, we're going to put you developmentally, not where you are developmentally, but where you are aged into a grade, I believe we hamper the ability for a teacher that had 22, this was a kindergarten teacher in Cheney last night, the diversity of which she's wrestling with says, you've got to lower my class size, you've got to give me some support, I can't do the extreme ends. And that's what every one of our teachers are wrestling with and every one of our families and every one of our communities. And so the struggle of how do we do this and how do we go forward is real and I just appreciate the work so much that's being done. So as you know, you said, well, let's take a look at a few of these. I just want to highlight two of them. Oftentimes, you know, we talk a lot about the post-secondary success of the Georgetown Policy Institute on individual plans, but I'd like to start with taking a look at some inputs in a very short period of time, last two years, some inputs. But I think it resonates with are people starting to put your vision and your plan into place? Now, you know, we have a new school funding formula, fairly new vision, and there's some people that would say, well, if we have a new formula and we have a new vision, why haven't we just changed everything immediately? That's not the way it works. It takes a while, right, to implement change and Steve, you and I can be impatient and that's okay, right? But we have to be consistent in how we go about working. So I just wanted to let you know, for counselors and social workers added by school districts in the last two years, we've added 132 counselors in schools, or that's gone up 11%. If you take a look at social workers, that number's almost exactly the same, 133, but it's gone up 26% because we had fewer social workers to start with in schools. These are ones hired by school districts. They do not take into account, Michelle, the partnership of Blue Valley with Children's Mercy. It doesn't take into account, Dina, Abilene's work and Kathy with the Mental Health Pilot Program, where we're partnering and those employees are someone else's employees, but they're working in schools. So this is in two years. Now, are we seeing, so some people say, are we seeing results? Well, we don't know yet. It'll be a while before we can quantify that. You know, your work on vaping and Center for Disease Control says, you know, it's going to be a while before we actually know the results of that. We think we're moving in the right direction. Teachers and staff saying, we need help, we need mental health teams and the amount of funding that went into the formula and part of your vision, that's being put, they're doing it, they're doing it. Now, you know, we've got to help young people and families as we use, as we go forward. So I mentioned, we were in Cheney last night and the topic was kindergarten readiness, having every child at age five socially, emotionally, and academically prepared to learn. And it struck me and I told them in the audience, I said, I'm going to share this with the State Board because in our daily work, in our daily work, and Janet, I don't know for you, but for me, I tend to forget each student today in Kansas has full access to all-day kindergarten. It wasn't too long ago that wasn't true. You know, it wasn't that long ago that wasn't true. And now it's like, well, yes, that's significant. That was funding that did that and it was a lot of school districts wanting to do that. And over the last three years, 1,600 more children are being served in our four-year-old at-risk program, that's gone up 22%. And in this funding that of the slots going forward, it will continue to go up over the next two years, commitment by the Kansas Legislature and Governor Kelly and Governor Collier before that, in that early childhood is important. Now, not every student gets served in a four-year-old at-risk program, there are great faith-based programs, there are great private home-based programs, but Kansas said, we have to engage communities on how we're going to help kids and families with that. So I would just want to share with you, these are inputs, these aren't the outputs, these are inputs, right? Hiring staff, scaling up programs, but you've got to do that first before you can see results. You've got to scale up before you can see, and I think you ought to be proud of that. I think we're extremely close to being able to serve every four-year-old child in an at-risk program that shows up without having to go through a slot process. We're very close to be able to do that. We're not quite there, but we're very close to being able to do that. So let's take a look then at some hard data, high school graduation rates. And you see, we've got this subdivided from all students to English language learners. So let's just start with all students. So we go back to the vision creation era of 2015. Our goal is, we'd like to get to 95%. And our goal is that they graduate with the skills to go on to meet their post-secondary dreams, okay? Not just graduate high school, but graduate with skill academically and socially emotionally. So from 2015 to 2019, you can see that we did not grow last year, 87.5, we stayed the same, 87.5. So over that period of time, we've grown 1.8%. If I go back to 14 and 13 and 12, you see that we've been going up and then around 14 and 15, we leveled out and then we started going up again. I was surprised a little bit, I thought we might tick up a little bit, but slow growth, if we're doing this right, is what we ought to see. We didn't see any growth with all students. So I'm going to share with you some, some data that can be exciting, some data that shows our challenges. Let's start with English language learners. That group went up. We're graduating more of them. That group in the same period has grown 5.4%. So when we're disaggregating, we're talking about at-risk kids, that group has grown 5.4%. It's outpaced the normal population. Free and reduced lunch, again, another, the poverty kids, that also ticked up by one-tenth, so statistically not significant, but it did go up slightly. And over that period, it's grown 2.7%. So while the entire student body's grown over that time 1.8, two of our groups that are at risk have outpaced that growth. Now, they were lower to start with, so we, but you can see that we're narrowing that gap without dropping the overall. Now, we've got to do both. Here is the one that has to cause us a little pause, and that's the students with disabilities, because we were up until this year seeing, again, good growth, and then this year we dropped 2% in the class of 19 with students with disabilities. So that overall increase because of that drop is only 0.7. Now, this data doesn't tell us what to do, it just tells us, this is, this is the snapshot of where we are. We're trying to get to 95, we're trying to help every student be successful. You can see, we've got some pockets over that is happening and you can be very proud of where we've been. And then you can see that we still have challenges to do. Students with disabilities took a drop and we're going to need to, you know, take a look at that and find out, are there things that, from a policy standpoint, we can, you know, pull levers, push levers in order to try to help that out? So this is the latest data, class of 19, the class of 20, of course, are midway through their high school senior year. They will graduate for the most part in May and they will have until the end of October to finish in their cohort group and then be counted in the class of 20. I just show you this chart because people will say to you, yes, but if the graduation goes up, do they have skill? The post-secondary success has gone up 4% over the two-year period. So we've increased the number of kids going on to earn a welding certificate, associate degree, baccalaureate by 4%. That has to remain in some sort of balance, or if graduation rate goes up much steeper than post-secondary success, then we have to ask the question, are we simply graduating kids without the skills necessary to go on? If those are in proportion, and right now, post-secondary is actually going up faster than graduation, which is fine, then I think that's, that's the data I think that you want to be concerned about and look, look forward. So as you know, we're trying to involve as many school districts to do this work as possible. I've given you this quote before, Jim Lovell, but if you, if you can Google that and find when he, he's actually being, just being interviewed in kind of a casual, and it was a casual, it wasn't a miracle, we just decided to go. We put our effort, our time, we just wanted to make this happen. That photo I shared with you one year ago, because it's one of my favorites, this is Apollo 8 coming around the moon for the first time. And for the first time, we got a view of Earth from the moon. Apollo 8 doesn't land on the moon, but it, this is a Christmas Eve photo when they quoted from the book Genesis and it just, just, I think, very important. So with that, we're announcing the second phase of Apollo, and I wanted to give you the timeline, if any of the school districts wanted to be a part of the redesign effort going forward. As you know, we have 66 school districts over 160 schools formally in parts of redesign. So we're going to have a webinar just to explain the application process. It'll be recorded, but the live portion will be on January 21st, when we come back at 9 o'clock, for anyone that's interested. There's no obligation, you tune in or you go back and watch it because it will be recorded. The application window then opens on Monday, February 4th. I'll just review with you, to be a part, you need to have a vote of the faculty, that vote needs to be affirmative of 80%. You need to have a letter of support from KNEA or the local bargaining unit for most districts, that's KNEA, and you need to have a public vote of the school board for the district. Those are the three criteria for the application process. It closes on April 3rd, so that window is approximately two months with spring break thrown in. And then we will announce those that will be involved in the second phase of Apollo at your board meeting on April 14th. Now, I may, I want to also mention to you that the Kansas Can and Do Symposium, which is put on by the Service Centers, all around redesign with, with school districts that are doing it, that is in Manhattan on March 2nd and 3rd, and I hope you can attend that. Way we look at our work is the annual conference, Kansas Can and Do Symposium, that's the annual conference in the fall, this is in the spring, and then of course, the summer, we have traditionally the Impact Institutes and we're revising those where teachers can go at a very low cost and really get project-based learning, personalized learning, standards-based learning, can get all that at a very, very reduced cost. So those are the dates coming up for Apollo. And with that, Madam Chair, I'd stand for any questions.
Board members, do we have questions for the Commissioner? What will be the...
Coffee or something this morning.
Yeah, what will be the process, I mean, as far as the marketing process to get the information out about Apollo 2? I know you've announced it here today.
We'll send it out on a listserv to all curriculum leaders, superintendents, all the groups that we have, we'll do social media starting this time and then we'll, we'll continue it.
Ann Mall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I take it it'll just be one school required then, as in Apollo 1?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We'd love to have the whole district because we think it's a district-wide initiative, but yes.
And then they'll do the training next year like the Apollo 1s are doing this year?
Yes. Now, you know, a superintendent that you know well, I won't mention him by name, said, you know, on Gemini versus Mercury, well, they had a better rocket anyway. So the Saturn rocket was much better than the Atlas rocket that got us to the moon, it was redesigned. We're better, our training is better collectively, we've had a lot of voice, our Apollo training is, our Apollo 2 training will be better, but it'll be a very similar type of regionalized training.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. McNeese?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not to put you on the spot, but I'm looking forward to seeing data on the redesigned schools and their progress or not, or where, how we're measuring them and are we using the same benchmarks, you know, coming up here, we've, well, we're in, coming into the third year?
With the first ones, yes.
With the first ones, which is a small group, but we're getting larger.
Right.
So what are we seeing out there in terms of progress?
Quantifiable would be pretty much still at the local level. I mean, we have some test score data, we have some attendance data, we have some survey data about how parents and kids feel about the experience, but you're only looking at in some cases, one year to the previous, maybe two. Overall, really good, but it's still early and, you know, some places better than others. But we're optimistic about that as we go forward, Jim.
Well, all of it's brand new, you know, with KISA and others as well, other evaluation processes. So, yeah, we're looking forward to that.
I might just mention, Madam Chair...
Yes, please.
This is hot off the press, December 4th, special issue of Education Week, you can get it online, it may be subscription-based, I'm not sure, I'm happy to share this with you, it's not very long. This is entirely on reading and the, and the research and the science, science around reading, which as you know, when the International Reading Association joined the other reading associations for the first time and said, there's no longer dispute of systematic phonics plays a key role, and then what's going on across the nation, it's not a Kansas-specific, but it's worth your reading, it's worth your patrons' reading, it's worth reading in schools. It's, it's, it's short, this happens to have ads in it and things too, so, but there's like four or five articles that are really well-done by people that have studied this really well. So that'll be a lot of our work going forward will be the Dyslexia Task Force work and make, in helping school districts understand what the science of reading says and what it doesn't say going forward, which is much different than how I spent, Kathy, and probably you spent our careers looking at it, the science has really come together on this and, and will continue to. You know, we're learning more every day about cognitive science and what the brain does and how it learns, and it's remarkable and that's medical advances, but we're the beneficiary of a lot of that is, you know, from stroke victims to unfortunate people in war that come back with, with trauma in the brain and how the brain gets to be retrained. So again, Jim, I'm looking at you and give you a lot of kudos for chairing that task force, I know they met yesterday, but when we were being superintendents, we didn't know this to the level that we know it. I mean, and now we do, so we do better when we have new information.
So Randy, is it possible for us to get a copy of that or...
I think so. I can't violate copyright, but I think we can get, we can get, I think I can ask Ann and the communications team, we can ask Ed Week if we can get multiple copies and if so, I'm sure they're just at cost.
Yeah. So if, would board members, would you like a copy of that? I mean, I certainly know I would. Okay, all right. I think most, most members would, would like a copy of that. Randy, kind of going back to the redesign, you know, we've talked about the research on reading now that's really progressing, you know, some of our things that we're doing with the redesign, the components, I think specifically about personalized learning and the project-based. How do you feel like the training, has the training kind of even upscaled from what we started with there on those components?
Yes, but we have a long way to go. I would say that we, in general, we have more training that's gone on around project-based learning than we have personalized. Now, we've done differentiation, which is whole group and then how do you differ, differentiate within the class. Personalized is really taking a look at standards and then allowing kids to go at pace and scope of how they do. And when you get into that, Kathy, you start to fundamentally change the look of the structure of school because you can't do it in a whole-group instructional way. So we're on the early frontier of that, but we hope to have a group of 30 to 50 trainers by the time we hit summer across the state that can deliver that at little to no cost to redesign buildings, but everyone that wants to come.
I could also see that the personalized learning, you could be talking about multi-age groups too.
Yes.
I mean, because then, then you really begin to talk about developmental levels and not grade bands.
And you saw that, I don't know if you remember, but in our visit to Dayton, you saw that, and I don't know if you realized you were watching it go on, but you were watching pre-K, K1 and 2, and those kids were entirely mixed and they were remixing, and then they went to projects and they were remixing based upon skill level, and then projects were heterogeneously grouped, then skill level was in a small group with a teacher or a para, but, or a special ed teacher, they had all those. And those, those teachers were a team and just flowing those kids back and forth. And again, you may not have noticed that those were multi-aged kids because, but they were. And that's, that's what I think, when you get to personalize, that's what has to happen. When you're in differentiation, you're still in a whole group. And what I hear, I don't know, is the frustration I hear from teachers is that the scope of academic, let's use a kindergarten teacher, I have someone that has a lesson in 300-word vocabulary, I have a kid reading at second grade. I have behavior with, this kid is growling, hiding under their desk, running out in the street, and this kid can attend a task and play as well with others, and you've given me 22 of this, such a wide range, I can't handle that. And we have to acknowledge that, that is real, that's happening every day. And so what's, what's the response to that? Well, you can say, let's lower the class size from 22 to 16, to 14, and, but there's a high cost to that, that sometimes districts can't sustain, but you've got to look at, what are we going to do to structure that so that teachers don't feel as isolated, that they feel like that they have support and that they can do this work going forward? That's really what redesign's trying to do. It's trying to raise academic success, but it's also giving, if done right, it's giving teachers and community members the right to think about how to structure it differently to make the, the work better.
And through this process, we've actually given districts authority to do that.
Yes, and we hope that they do that.
Yeah.
You know, again, there's lots of local control in this. Dr. Schrock and I were talking before, the challenging thing with any policymaker is, will this policy actually have an impact? And it's so often, what we want to do in policy is go run a school. You can't run a school from here or across the street. You can only try to develop policy that allows people that are doing that the right work. And that's, that's a, that's a difficult balance, but I think that's what we're trying to establish in redesign is, let's give the people the opportunity, train them, show them possibilities, and then let them tell us what that work ought to be, holding them accountable to high, high outcomes that we want to see across the board.
Which talks to the, the good work of local control in the state of Kansas, that you've got the structure and the support at the state level, but you allow the locals to have that flexibility that they need.
It's never a perfect balance, but we try to strike it.
We hope folks take advantage of that. Ann Mall?
Thank you. I know it probably seems to those folks that when they say, well, we've got the whole next year to plan, that that's a long time, but it goes so fast and they do like, you know, four sessions in the fall and then they're supposed to be building the rocket. But I've sat in on most of those, at least for the morning. I don't stay all day because you don't want to shut the conversation down, you know, they're afraid they're going to say something in front of me and it's going to go back home and I'm telling you, it doesn't go back home. But anyway, what I found is by, even though this is December, they, most of them haven't been anywhere else to visit any other school and most of them haven't been to project-based learning training, and yet they're trying to build the rocket and they don't have the vision, you know what I mean? Because some of this stuff doesn't make sense till you go see it. So if there's anything about Apollo 2 that I think we could do better, is encourage them to do all that training this summer and as soon as they agree to it, go in May to visit somewhere or go early in the fall so you see what it looks like.
Some, yes, and we get feedback on that. If you, if you know one thing about Apollo that we didn't do to the extent in Gemini and Mercury, is that we front-load now a lot on communication and involvement of the community and parents, because that's what we got, we had feedback on.
I keep telling them, bring, bring your PTO presence along to the training.
Right. But we have had a handful of districts, and I'm going to use FrontNet as an example, but there, there have been others, that actually Humboldt's doing it right now, where they're going somewhat through the training right now in preparation to join in redesign a year from now. So they have a smaller team, but they're going through it, trying to think of, how are we going to broaden this out? And then they're formally joining the next year. Not a bad, I mean, people are welcome to do that and we're, we're fine with that. We're just trying to be helpful in whatever school district and school needs to move that forward, if they're in KISA, and, you know, we want to be supportive of that too.
Yeah, I think there was one school there, they weren't actually an Apollo school, but they just came to see, and I thought, that's cool.
Yes, that's, yeah, and we would encourage that. So if you have schools, say, can I just go learn? Yes, we can send you to the closest regional and you're welcome just to take a small team or a big team, come once, come every time, you know, we're just trying to help, facilitate however that district wants to go about it, so.
I would say the only group that shuts down conversation more than me is when the principal's sitting at the table, so I would warn the principals to skip one every once in a while. There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I now declare the Citizens' Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education Meeting open at 10:31. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks speakers to identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent if applicable. The State Board asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues and topics, personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be listed, limited to three minutes, and any board questions are for clarification. Our first speaker is Steve Roberts.
I have a friend who wants to build farm towers in schools. And it's not a not-for-profit, so I can't make a pitch for my friend who wants to make a buck. We just don't do that here. So I want to give you sort of a meta presentation as you, you look at some of the graphics that they put together for what they hope they can do with you. It's a reference to NASA there. It's a group that wants to build tower farms in our schools. There's all sorts of advantages to it. You can read about it. But what I want to do is I let you read this for yourselves. It suggests that we consider a decoupling of primary versus secondary school. And in secondary school, we have public-private partnerships. And in primary school, we just focus on teaching kids to read well and understand the language of numbers and how to play well. I think there are a lot of advantages to this. I think we could, if we accepted that private business is going to be part of governmental work in a lot of what we do, I think we'd have a better educational product and service. I was talking with someone from the Justice Department. I drove her to Crown Center, and she's an investigator of cyber crimes. And she was explaining how when there's a, there's a failure in aviation, you know, our airlines are all private companies, but when there's a problem, a crash, the government comes in and investigates with experts so that they fix the problem so that it doesn't happen again. Very few airline crashes repeat themselves. That is to say, the causes of airline crashes are generally fixed because of a public-private partnership. And I want you to think about those sorts of approaches to things as we welcome vendors to present to us. So the ask is going to be to put this on a future agenda, January or February, so that these people who know what they're doing with tower farms can make a presentation. I want to also mention that the governor came in, Governor Kelly, with whom I've not yet had a conversation, that not only do we need to have things open for bids, you know, we need to have an open bid process, we need to talk about values. And I think that's something we should embrace. Now, I'm not going to suggest that Governor Kelly's values and mine perfectly align. I'm sure they don't. But we need to talk about values. And so as we redesign, some of us only have one more year left. I was thinking about the number 84 this morning, 84 down and 12 to go, 12 more months. And my days of politics will be done. When we get to this graphic, I just want to point out that my good friend has an effort in Summerfield, Kansas, to, to work with veterans. So this group that wants to pitch to us is not strictly dealing with schools. They're working with veterans in a, in a variety of ways. Very quickly, I put a call into Cheryl Johnson last week. She explained that there are some schools that are doing this. She mentioned Mays. She mentioned a couple others. Some, some really exciting things are already going on with this technology. I guess the, the crux of my pitch is that we need to not be afraid to welcome people who want to do the right thing, even if they have a profit motive of sorts, because I think that's how our country works. I think, I think we do better when we're not afraid of the future and we're not afraid to get out of our comfort zone.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Appreciate your comments. State Board Citizen Open Forum is closed at 10:36. We'd like to thank our speaker for sharing his views with the board, and the State Board will determine if any issue should be addressed as an agenda item at a future meeting. Okay, thank you very much. And we will now move on to our, an update. This actually is a progress update only. The board will receive recommendations in January. So Stephen King here is here today to update us on computer science standards and the implementation process. So welcome, Stephen.
The opportunity to update you on the, the work that my task force has been doing over the past six months. I've been trying to address a fairly complicated issue of how we implement computer science standards that were adopted in April across the state in a way that is equitable, that is, that just makes sense. And I, one of my charges to the task force has been, you know, we're doing computer science really well in places like Wichita, Kansas City, and some other places as well. But the solutions that the task force comes up with, the recommendations, I said, should work as well in towns like Iowa, Lakin, some of the smaller western towns in Kansas, as they do in the more urban areas. So I'd like to present to you what I've been presenting across the state so far. I've had presentations in Hutchinson. I've had presentations in Kansas City, Salina. Tomorrow is my final presentation. I'm actually going to Siblet, so that will be a lot of fun. And I start my presentation with this slide. The board doesn't really need to see this. This, of course, is your definition of a successful high school graduate, but I start all of my presentations with this slide to remind people of the importance of computer science. Computer science, of course, is an academic discipline. It has been primarily taught at the post-secondary level, but it has been taught quite well at the, at the secondary level. And we, with our standards, have implemented an integration into the lower levels as well. So it's certainly an academic discipline. In our standards, we have quite a bit of discussion on computational thinking, which is actually a cognitive skill. It's cognitive preparation and just similar to the scientific method. Certainly, computer science is a technical skill. It kind of is almost the definition of that, and it's an employability skill as well, as we've been across the state, talking to people. Obviously, there's, there's programmer jobs that are important. There are IT jobs that are important. But these days, you can't buy a combine that doesn't have computer science equipment on it, that has algorithms in it to increase yield and that sort of thing. We visited a manufacturing facility up in Marysville, Kansas, Langdahl Traders. They make military trailers, they make agriculture trailers, and they actually have buildings that don't have anybody in them. Everything is automated. And so again, these technical skills taught in computer science, computational thinking, are important across multiple disciplines of employment. So starting from the definition of what a successful high school graduate looks like, computer science is a very important thing to be taught at all levels. Now, I gave this presentation at the council superintendent's a couple of weeks ago, and so I asked them first, have you adopted any sort of computer science standards in your district? I asked the Computer Science Teachers Association standards, none of them. The IST, which is the International Society for Technology Education, seven districts had implemented those standards. Our Kansas computer science standards, it were adopted in April. We had 20 districts that said they had adopted that already, and 32 of them said, no. So, so we do have a challenge ahead of us. I asked them what the greatest barrier they saw to teaching computer science, and as you can see, most of them revolve around teaching. The ability to get qualified teachers into the classroom who are comfortable and competent in teaching computer science at all levels. Now, we did start from the existing national standards, the CSTA standards. We did, as you recall from our April presentation, we, we made them grade level from, from P through 5. And then middle school is a grade band. High school, we have two bands, L1, which is for all high school students, and L2 actually maps our CTE pathways, the IT pathways into academic standards. And so that's the structure of our standards. We did talk about, we wanted to avoid specific technologies. So if you read the standards, you, you won't see things like passwords or keyboarding because the idea is that technology moves so rapidly in IT and computer science that we wanted to stick to concepts like authentication, input. The timeline, we started back in June 2018. We were adopted in 2019 in April. We, we were charged with a task force. We created the task force in June. We've, we've run into some scheduling things with starting school years and that sort of thing. But so, so I've done a listening tour in November, and like I said, my last presentation is tomorrow in Siblet. And I hope to present the final recommendations to this board in January. We had four subcommittees. I divided it into four different groups. One, I called the student experience because I didn't want to talk much about policy, although we ended up calling it the policy subcommittee anyway because that's kind of the core of what we were talking about. We also talked about ecosystem. One of the reasons I wanted to talk about ecosystem is because Kansas City has gained national recognition in terms of their computer science and STEM overall ecosystem. And the ecosystem in Kansas City actually has the, sorry, the, the teachers at both public and private schools communicating with industry, communicating with libraries, communicating with STEM facilities of all sorts so that they understand the needs of the teachers, needs of the students, needs of the, the industry. And so that, that public-private partnership that Mr. Roberts talked about in an ecosystem is something I would like to map across the entire state if possible. We actually had on that, or have on that subcommittee, Martha McCabe from the KC STEM Alliance, who's done some, she's actually the leader of the KC group. We also talked about teacher preparation and we talked about curriculum a little bit. So I would like to go through each one of these subcommittees. The policy, the Student Experience Subcommittee focused on the nine recommendations of code.org. The first recommendation of code.org is to create a statewide plan, and that's pretty much what we're doing. The enumeration of goals is the first part. Then, once the, the goals have, have been firmed up, the plan is to, the idea is to create a plan that enumerates different years and kind of lays out how we're going to achieve those goals. The second recommendation of code.org is to define computer science. Now, this was a hard one because at the initial meeting of the standards committee, I, I talked about what standards are in Kansas. I talked about the nature of model standards versus assessed standards. And I said, so let's start by defining computer science. And I gave them about, about an hour and a half, and an hour and a half of arguing later, I said, okay, never mind, we're going to just do standards. Because wrapping your arms around computer science is difficult. I actually had four different states definitions of computer science in front of us at the time. Each one of the four states definitions was different. I had members of the, of the committee telling me that what I do now for a living IT is not computer science because it's a niche. I've, I've had all kinds of different opinions of what computer science is. The subcommittee said, okay, now we have standards, so let's use those as a definition, which made a lot of sense. So we now have a definition of computer science in that we have standards. And I do want to point out that the, the, the standards include that, that important concept of computational thinking. They were written from the idea of computational thinking is kind of the core of what the standards should approach. Funding is always an interesting topic. The, the, the subcommittee went around on this a little bit. The number they came up with is a million dollars per year over five years. A big part of that is based upon code.org's, they're, they actually have a funding approximation tool. The approximation tool assumes $500 per elementary school teacher and $6,000 per middle school and high school teacher in the state of Kansas. It also assumes that we're starting from zero, so training basically every teacher in the state of Kansas. Obviously, we're not starting from zero, so I, I don't think this is going to be called for. There are a lot of different funding models across the United States right now. Virginia, for example, wrote about a million and a half dollar check to their community college to develop training for the faculty, for the, for the, for the teachers. Arkansas is spending $15 million on, on training, developing, and stipending teachers and stipending students. Actually, in Arkansas, if you pass the computer science AP exam as a high school senior with a score of five, you get a check for $1,000 from the state. Sorry. Washington is, it's a $2 million, they're giving districts grants. Wyoming is spending a million dollars. So there are different funding models across the states. This model calls for $100,000 for a full-time employee per year. I'm not sure many state employees make that much, but so this model, again, is, is a million dollars per year. I think there's different models. Teachers and training, like I said, this is the crux of the, what the field is looking for. At the different presentations I've been giving, for example, in Hutchinson, one of the attendees introduced herself. She was a superintendent in one of the local districts, and she said, I'm just here to hear what the state is going to make us do, which is kind of the opposite of what we're trying to do. But so, so teachers, the ability of the districts to offer teaching, high-quality teaching to these standards is one of the core aspects of what we're trying to do. So they're looking at high-quality professional development. Like I said, that code.org has, has a model in that that says $6,000 to bring a middle school or high school teacher up to speed. The, the subcommittee is recommending a few different pathways to an endorsement. One of the concerns is that a, you know, the state used to have a licensure. It used to have a, a computer, it wasn't computer science, it was computer, I'm blanking on the term. Yeah, it was, it was similar. It was licensed, it was created back in the 80s and ended up going away about 2002, 2003. And, and the licensure, the TLA folks say it was because it wasn't used. I've been to, to groups of people who are, who are teaching programming, and I've asked them what their licensure is to be able to teach that topic in the state. And, and there were a couple of hands that went up and said that they were computer science licensed or endorsed teachers. Most of them, however, are endorsed through the CTE program. The CTE pathways has an option for people to, to go through and teach. Obviously, there's a practice exam in computer science. So there are multiple ways of getting qualified, endorsed, to teach computer science. It's just that we don't have a computer science endorsement. So one of the recommendations is to create a computer science endorsement. What we don't want to do, though, and, and my, my cautioning to the subcommittee is we don't want to restrict people who are already teaching it. We, we don't want to, to, to make it harder for districts to teach this particular topic. So they're talking about existing licensure. People who are already teaching CTE courses would, of course, already get, would, would walk into this with the endorsement because they're already teaching the topics. If you've taught an AP computer science course in the past three years, then the assumption would be that you are qualified to teach it. Existing license, a grade level with praxis is, is kind of our, our normal approach. The third bullet is, is, the, the term is micro-credentialed, although that's, that's a term that is a little bit contentious, if you will. But the idea is that if you've had a certain number of credits in computer science and professional development opportunities, such as, for example, the Microsoft MTA certifications, which count for some college credits and, and show a certain level of ability in programming computer science, computer science topics, that would be a path to endorsement. And then obviously, pre-service coursework with the traditional endorsement model. The higher education institutions were actually a fairly decent part of the subcommittee. I had representation from Wichita State and from Kansas Wesleyan, and for a while from Kansas, from University of Kansas and from Kansas State. They're, they're recommending, understanding that we don't really control much of what happens at the post-secondary level. And the decision on what to teach in the pre-service programs is made at the post-secondary level, typically by a, a governance body at the, at the post-secondary institution. But they do recommend a work group to, to work with these institutions to develop high-quality endorsement, high-quality pre-service paths to endorsement at the elementary level in addition to at the, or at the secondary level. One recommendation was to create a position in the state in KSTE over computer science. That actually is a recommendation from code.org. And, and having been in kind of a dual role myself, I, I will attest to the importance of this. There is a fair amount of messaging involved in this, this topic. I filled out a question yesterday, in fact, about, or day before yesterday, about the importance of, somebody was asking me about the requirement to teach computer science in high schools. And it was, it was a quick topic, but I think it's, it's going to be important to form a And it was a quick topic, but I think it's going to be important to form a marketing campaign, if you will, a messaging campaign on the importance of computer science, on how to approach the computer science standards, on how to build this, how to build the capacity within our teaching. And so having a standalone position will be important. There are various approaches to the requirement to teach computer science in various states. Some states are approaching it from the requirement standpoint, but obviously in with our local control framework, sorry. The wording we've hit upon is encourage secondary schools to offer computer science A lot of them already are. We have a pretty widespread coverage of our CTE pathways throughout the state of Kansas. Specifically, the Web and Digital Communications pathway has well over 100 implementations spread all across Kansas. The Programming Software Development Pathway, which a lot of people think as computer science, and of course, computer science isn't just that, but that particular pathway is mostly in the triangle from Kansas City over to about Salina down to Wichita. But I do think that we are fairly well-covered in terms of CTE pathways across the state. Another recommendation of code.org is to allow computer science to fulfill a core graduation requirement. And the Subcommittee's gone back and forth on this. Different states, again, have different approaches to this. For example, Arkansas does allow computer science to fill a math requirement. Arkansas also has a requirement for maths. So if you take computer science as one of those, and you still have free maths, which is, of course, Kansas's minimum graduation requirement. New Mexico's another example. New Mexico passed a law that said that students can count computer science as a math or science graduation requirement. But New Mexico's law says as long as the student also has Algebra II and geometry, which for most math programs is year two and three. So I think there's a consensus that students do need three years of math in order to graduate from high school. But the tie into computational thinking is one that, you know, the relation between computational thinking and the scientific method, perhaps we could allow computer science to satisfy a high school graduation credit in science. The ecosystem. And the ecosystem is where really the requirement, the need for statewide, a single person who does computer science in KSDE comes from. The initial work is going to be pretty intense. They are working at K-State on creating a statewide computer science teachers conference. And they're also developing a couple of websites for the computer science work. Teacher preparation, again, is going to be an important issue. Wichita State, for example, one of their leading teachers is developing, is working on computer science standards into their pre-service program. And I guess that was it. Are there any questions?
I would imagine there probably are. Board members have questions? I'm particularly interested in that, you know, you talk about computer science and math, computational thinking and science. I'm particularly interested if there could not be a class created in high school that kind of combines all of those pieces and whether it's for science credit or a math credit, but it seems like to me that that, it might be different than what the current computer science classes are, like coding and so on, but to really integrate those three curriculum areas, so to speak. I don't know. I think it'd be interesting, and I think it'd be interesting if some district would be interested in doing something like that. I think I, I kind of think it makes sense, but.
I've been in, actually, a classroom in Blue Valley at CAPS where they, the students at the same time were gaining a computer science math, or computer science high school credit, a math high school credit, and a computer science college credit. It comes down to the teacher credentials, obviously, but it was definitely an integrated class where they were working through discrete mathematics and computer science at the same time. The new, part of the reason we used the College Board's work for, in our own standards, the College Board created a second computer science AP exam. The first one was a coding exam. Basically, if you were going to pass it, you had to know Java. The second exam was a computational thinking exam. It went through the rigors of, you know, approaching algorithms, the rigors of understanding how abstraction works. And you submit a portfolio in any language you choose. So it's less of a coding exam than it is a computational thinking exam. And that kind of class is very similar to what you described.
Yeah, it kind of intrigues me to think about that. I think that might be an interesting thing. Got a couple of questions. Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. King. As we've talked about before, one of my perspectives is maybe we're spending too much time worrying about credentials and not enough simply evaluating who's in front of us, that sort of thing. So in the spirit of math is not very popular with some people, I get that a lot, you know, for years I've been saying it's a risk to talk about race, religion, or politics, right? You don't just talk about those casually. You better be careful who you're talking with. I decided to add math to that list, so we have four things we don't talk about. But do you see a cautionary tale about requiring this? Because my experience is, as much as I would love for everyone to have a good basis of understanding in both geometry and algebra, some folks just aren't wired that way. I mean, if you're a natural poet, which we have in our midst, we have some citizens who are, they're just, they're poets. They get more out of a sunrise or a sunset than I would ever get. Then what are the dangers of actually having this requirement from your perspective or cautionary tale?
Capacity. Capacity is a primary danger to having this as a requirement. And as you say, there's not a lot of people who go into computer science as it is in a post-secondary level. And so requiring a computer science effectively minor for a teacher is a challenge. When I go around the state and I look at who's teaching it currently, it is primarily the business teachers who've taken on either a programming class, an applications class, web development class, that sort of thing. Arkansas, in their approach, Arkansas started basically where we are about five years ago. And they started understanding that current, at the time, most of their computer science was taught through CTE, just like it is currently in Kansas. And so their approach is to take math teachers and make them part-time computer science teachers, effectively. And they've got an entire system, they're spending $15 million a year in doing it and so forth. My concern is that Kansas doesn't have enough math teachers. And so turning math teachers into computer science teachers may not be the best idea. And again, the people that you see actually teaching programming right now through Kansas are primarily the business teachers. And so offering a path for them to get a credential in computer science just makes the most sense.
Jim Porter?
Thank you. You may have addressed this. I got a call just at the beginning of your presentation, and if you have, I apologize. I'm asking this question with my hat on as legislative liaison for this board. Last year at the, during the legislative session, I got in some rather contentious discussion with lobbyists from the, from the industry over a bill that I thought was And so my question is, in your dealing, in the group that you deal with, are some of those people involved in these, in your task force?
Yes, they were. I specifically invited some of the lobbyists who were involved in that bill to be on the task force, and they were positively involved, in fact.
Okay. And so do you think maybe we've dealt with some issues that we don't have to deal with some of the same things we did last year and maybe work more cooperatively? We will be able to work more, have they bought into the process?
I think so. I think that they've come to understand the issue we have with capacity and building capacity.
Well, thank you for doing that, and thank you for your work.
Jim McNeese?
Well, Stephen, thank you very much for your presentation. Are we going to have access to this PowerPoint so we can go back through it? Because there's a lot of information you provided, you know, and access to you to get some questions asked later. I don't know about you guys, but there's a lot of information in there, you know.
Absolutely.
Now, there are a number of issues, and then Jim was just bringing up several of them, so I'll start there in terms of what we want the legislature to do. And obviously, one of the things that's going to be part of it is dollars. Not everybody has the same resources. When I say resources, they could be in people or equipment or information technology or just capacity, you know. And certainly, I would have to say that, yeah, let's rush in and require another course for graduation when we don't even know what that course is going to be. But we all agree that kids need to know or be able to do, you know, use computers in their life. Or computers might not even be the right word anymore. The apparatus they'll have today and in the future, you know. And I've been around, I was there when we bought five computers and thought we were the best school district in the state. And then we all looked at each other, who can use it? You know, there's a variety of definitions out there, and you address that, you know. But the real challenge is that we have to build a capacity within our educational systems, that this is more of a fluid and experienced and everyday use rather than just an event or a class or an activity, you know. Because we're building not for what you can do today or yesterday, but what you will be asked to do in the future. You know, so you have to keep that in mind. This is not going to happen unless we have somebody who champions it at the state level, you know, at the district level and in the building level. You know, we can issue all the edicts we want, but unless there's some champion who's going to take those edicts and turn them into reality because of the wide diversity of experiences and backgrounds that we have in this field, you know, within the school. And that's why we have business teachers. They were smart enough to pick this up and willing enough to do it, but doesn't mean they're actually the ones that should do it, you know. But I don't know what the criteria should be for a class, or even if a class is necessary. So a lot of questions out there, you know. But certainly, I think some of your recommendations are, few that I focused in on today, we have to do if we're going to move the needle on this, you know, to help students. Because every school district has a different capacity, and every school district has pretty much a different model for implementing it. There's similarities, but they're very different, you know. And some are just better than others, but I'm getting rambling now. But yeah, thank you for your presentation. This is really good. This is taking the standards and applying them in a very practical manner, you know, in the schools and challenging us to do it at the board level and the legislative level and the district level. So thank you.
Commissioner has a question.
Stephen, with the, do you have enough information at this point from the field to know that, what the primary implementation process from a curriculum standpoint is? You mentioned the standards, and my anecdotal, so that's why I'm asking, would lead me to believe that maybe Project Lead the Way would be the most successful curriculum implementation relative to computer science with maybe Advanced Placement Computer Science course far second. But do you have enough information to even know from a curricular standpoint what most districts that are already involved in this are doing?
I do, sir. I, of course, as a state employee, I can't endorse any particular curriculum, which is why the curriculum part was kind of left off. We do have a group that's working on cataloging the various curriculums out there. I cautioned them away from trying to evaluate the curriculum. Project Lead the Way does have a very big footprint in the state and elsewhere. Project Lead the Way is the equivalent of a Cadillac, if you will, in terms of the curriculum and teacher preparation, that sort of thing. Code.org has a teacher, has curriculum as well and teacher preparation. There are a whole lot of people getting into the business right now, in part because this is a big hot topic nationally. And so if you go to the vendor floor at CSTA or IST, you're going to run into a whole lot of people who will sell you a whole lot of stuff, a lot of them selling robots and that sort of thing. And there's a lot of great stuff out there. You know, we actually had representatives, and still do have representatives, from Project Lead the Way and Microsoft. Microsoft has a Teal's option that's a pretty nice one. So we had representation from some of the vendors on the Subcommittee. I cautioned them that we are going to remain curriculum neutral, but there are some great options out there, so.
But I was just, the current landscape is what I was thinking about.
Current landscape, PLTW is leading the way. I mean, it's in their name, but.
Well, I know, and Jim can talk about, he was an early adopter, but like when I'm in Goddard there, the South Central seems to be pretty big on that. And then you get in the Northeast a little bit more with Advanced Placement Computer Science. But that was just observational as I visit schools, and that's why I wondered the current landscape, what the curriculum method that had been chosen to deliver computer science.
Yeah, there are about, I think, half a dozen currently curriculum leaders who can, who have been approved by the College Board to deliver Advanced Placement. The problem with Advanced Placement that I've talked to the Committee about, I've talked to the field about, if you're focused on Advanced Placement, which is typically a junior, senior-level course, you're looking at the wrong end of the educational spectrum. You know, to me, to build the computational thinking, where we see the success in that, the research is pointing toward the earlier grades, getting kids involved with algorithms, getting kids involved with that sort of thing, even just with robots and drones and that sort of thing in class, getting them to play with this. So Advanced Placement is an important piece of this, but it's not the only one.
We've got a couple more questions. This is from Ben Jones, who's listening on the road. He wanted to know what the plan would be to support small schools with their professional development so we can be sure to involve all students.
That's a very good question. I don't have a definitive answer for that yet. That was one of my requirements going into it for the Subcommittee is that we look at, look at small schools. I, for example, I was in the redesign effort last year, and I supported a school in Lakin, which is why I typically use that town. It's a community of 2,200 people. It's, you know, west of Garden City. It's a beautiful little town, very small school. So how do you support computer science in a very small school like that? I think integration is a key point to that. You integrate classes, I, and you had mentioned integrating a math and computer science and possibly science into the same class. It's happening. To Mr. Roberts' question, how does that look in terms of the, how do we know the teacher's qualified to do that? That's an important question. But I think the key to supporting small districts is developing an integration plan.
Makes sense. Jean Clifford?
Thank you. That was, that's a very interesting presentation. I just had a question on, does broadband access have any impact on districts' ability to meet these standards? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That actually is a topic nationally. Some of the states that are having problems with broadband access, it's hard to bring, to bring some of the computer science curriculum vendors, and if you don't have broadband access and that sort of thing. It's not really an issue in Kansas, though. Currently, we have 98% of our buildings have broadband access. By the end of this year, I'm led to believe that we'll actually have 100% of our buildings have broadband access. So it is an important consideration, but it's not one that's limiting us in Kansas.
Jim McNeese?
There's one issue that we're kind of skirting around, and thank you, Randy, for bringing up the Project Lead the Way and the AP, and also Jean for bringing up the smaller districts. There's an equity issue built into this. You know, if you're going to do Project Lead the Way and AP, you know, you're going to have investment that's very specific and quite frankly, pretty substantial, you know. But it's not just there, but the equity is districts that have the resources, schools that have the resources, you know. Some of our less affluent schools have less support in this particular area, or teachers who are not prepared, you know, for this. So I think we need to keep in mind through our discussion the whole equity in terms of rural and urban, as well as, you know, those that have and those that have not. of rural and urban, as well as, you know, those that have and those that have not.
Well, Stephen, thank you very much. And Board, just to remind you, this was an update today, and actually, next month in January, we'll get recommendations as a receive item. So we'll be hearing back from Stephen again next month and maybe some of his committee. So thank you very much, and thank you for what your group is doing. We appreciate the hard work. Board members, we're going to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll be back to listen to some information on vaping. Agenda number nine is to act on policy recommendation from E Cigarette Vaping Task Force. And Mark, I think you're going to kind of give us an update, and then we'll take a look at the policy. And Board members, in your electronic packet, you will have the policy recommendation on page 24, so on your computer if you want to take a look at that. But I think, Mark, you're going to give us the update first.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Board members and Commissioner, for this opportunity to give you an update and then to present the draft policy for action. I do have at least two of our task force members in attendance. We have Ally Sealing, who is a tremendous asset for us from the Johnson County area, and Sarah Prem from the American Lung Association, who has been here on several times, and she will give us an update on Tobacco 21. And prior to that, I'm going to ask Sarah to hand this over to Ann so it can be distributed. This is just, it's a little booklet that the Kansas National Education Association developed with a specific focus on vaping, and they have made it available to all 25,000 of their members. And KNEA has been a tremendous asset, allowing us to hold our previous three meetings at their building. Mark Farr and that group have been tremendous to work with. And Hina Shaw is entering the room right now from the Kansas Health Institute. We're good. So just some updates. One of them is you have been told previously about some Kansas school districts that have joined a lawsuit against Juul and other manufacturers, distributors, and sellers of vaping devices. Previously, Goddard, Blue Valley, Olathe, Shawnee Mission, and Jayhawk Lynn districts had joined. But more recently, Manhattan, Ogden, and Lawrence just last night voted to join the lawsuit as well. So there are some fairly large districts starting to cover a pretty good portion of the Kansas student population. The, there was a presentation on vaping at the KASB convention this last weekend. I was supposed to be there, but illness prevented me from being there, but Jordan Roberts of KDHE and Angie Stahlbaum are from KASB presented. I hear that it went well, and they had around 40 people in attendance and had a number of questions. In early January, weather permitting, I will be going out to Oakley and to Soblet to talk to the administrator councils out there about vaping. So we are actively trying to get information out. Just an update on kind of numbers from the CDC. The, we've been talking about their lung injury cases. They now have come up with a name for it, for E cigarette or vaping-associated lung injury, EVALI. So if you're seeing that in information about it, electronic, E cigarette vaping-associated lung injury, and I don't know exactly, Hina might know, is it EVALI or?
I've only heard EVALI.
Okay, so we'll go with EVALI and not try to pronounce it. But as of December 3, there have been 2,291 hospitalized cases of EVALI and 48 deaths in 25 states. Of the hospitalized patients, 78% are under 35 years old, so a large portion. And the median age is 24, and the age range has been from 13 to 77. So we have had patients as young as 13 that have been hospitalized with this. 16% of those cases are under 18, so, and 38% are between 18 and 24. So we have over 50% of the hospitalized cases that are under the age of 24. So those are the latest statistics on the lung injury cases. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah for her to give an update on T21.
Hi, thank you all for having us back. Hina just alerted me that it's EVALI is what they're calling that, so EVALI. So, update on our Tobacco 21 policy. About three weeks ago, the Tobacco Free Kansas Coalition held a convening of supportive organizations, called it a summit, where we rolled out our draft legislation and got comment and support from all the organizations, such as the YMCA was there, a variety, Kansas Health Association or Hospital Association, several others, about 40 members of different organizations, representatives. So we have a very good coalition going to move this forward. Later today, we'll take the draft to Senate leadership to have them kind of go over the high points of it, and we feel very confident in their support as well. So I think we are definitely on track to introduce it this session, probably early in the session. We know that Dr. Epley is on board, and we are still working on our Senate supporter. So I, other than it's moving along and it is still in very good shape, I don't have too much more to tell you today, but happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Any questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did you have? Just one more bit. Yeah, okay. Yeah, the, so for December, instead of having a full task force meeting, we are going to have a meeting of the discipline and cessation subgroup. We felt collectively that that is the next challenge to take on. So Jordan Roberts of KDHE has organized a meeting, which I will be attending along with a number of others. But the focus will be on developing recommendations based on best practices on discipline, on how to address the critical need that schools are facing regarding how to, what to do in cases where students have products. And Michelle and Ally had a question regarding the policy that relates to this, and that is if a student brings, has a vaping device, but it does not have a pod in it, is that covered by the policy? And the way the policy is written, it is to cover that because it is an electronic nicotine delivery system. So it's not, it doesn't say just the vaping juice, it is the system which would include all components of that. But the, we know that schools are struggling with how to handle situations where students are caught vaping or with vaping devices, and that will be the focus of the task force for this month with the plan to come back in January with recommendations for the state board to receive and then hopefully act on in February with the hope that we will be able to provide schools with those best practices in time for them to build that into their manuals and materials for the 2020-2021 school year.
Okay, so if there's, I think, Anne, you have questions, any questions? Several questions have popped up. Any questions before we actually get into the policy? Because, Mark, you'll probably go over that a little bit, and then we'll actually take action on that. So we'll start with Ann Mall.
Thank you. Who is taking the lead on the lawsuit? I mean, is this a national thing? I remember one of the, I mean, when they say, like, Lawrence agreed to get in, who are they getting in with?
I believe there is a class action.
That's what it is, a class action.
It's qualifying as a class action lawsuit, so I don't know who is kind of the central piece of that, but they're basically all joining the same lawsuit.
Okay, I just wondered, you had the lead on it. Did you say that 30% of the hospitalizations were under 18? I was.
16% were under 18.
I thought that was too high.
And 38% were between 18 and 24.
Okay, that's it. And the, what they're going to work on this month is basically the discipline policy?
Yes.
What about cessation?
We, cessation is the logical next piece because the, we can offer best practices guidance on discipline at present, but because cessation for programs that are directed at youth in particular are just evolving, we need to, it's going to take us a little more time to figure out exactly what resources are available and what will be the recommendations, but that would quickly follow the work on discipline.
And we're working on the legislation for the age. Are we putting forward any legislation on the flavors?
The sense that I get is that that would be, there would potentially be, that they don't want to muddy the waters with the flavor ban. They feel like the raising the age is the first priority, and then the, kind of the next logical step would be to address flavor bans. In other words, it's kind of win this battle, win the next battle, win the war, rather than lose the first battle.
Couldn't we do two bills? I mean, we already have an age limit of 18, which doesn't seem to mean a thing. 21 probably isn't going to stop them either, but not having flavors keeps kids from doing it.
Part of the problem is, I understand, and Sarah, you're welcome to come up, is that when you start, when you start talking, if you talk T21 around the industry, the industry in general is, will give lip service to support that. The problem when you get into flavor bans is you are, the industry starts talking about putting small businesses out of work, and.
Well, sure, they do.
But, and.
Because they think we'll believe that.
And Sarah can back this up, but then they'll start, they start getting into semantics on flavoring.
Right.
Because then they'll start reclassifying flavors so that a flavor ban isn't really effective because they reclassify flavors to fit under a tobacco umbrella, that it's considered a tobacco flavor when it's not. So I'll let Sarah follow up.
You're absolutely right. There's no reason you couldn't run a separate flavor ban, and that would be fine. We're just concerned about if you put flavor onto 21. It's, it does raise different issues. And like, I was at a conversation with Chamber, and 21 is already, in the 19 states that have 21, there's evidence that it only reduces sales by 2%. It is not a major economic impact. But when you start talking flavor ban, you start impacting a whole, single-issue store, right? So you've got vape shops. So if you eliminate flavors, you are, they see that as a threat. So that's where that comes from, and the Chamber.
Because when you only reduce usage 2%, we haven't helped kids that much.
Yeah. But I still think that keeping 21, just about 21, is the strategic thing.
I don't disagree. I'm just wondering why we're not running a second bill so we get this conversation started about what the barriers are and what we could and couldn't do.
Yeah. And I do have the name of the law firm. It's, I'm not sure if this is pronounced right, Goza, G-O-Z-A, Honold, H-O-N-N-O-L-D.
Thank you.
Overland Park, I believe.
I just wanted to add to the flavor ban. So that Legislative Options document, those were all separate bills, so Tobacco 21, the taxation bill, Indoor Air Clean Air Act, all of those. So you could run a separate bill. The only thing that we outlined there is, in the past six months, it's been the executive branch that's been using their public health authority to put on flavor bans, and that's gotten some litigation with it. And so if you did run a bill through the legislature, that might be another option. Other states just haven't done it yet. And so we could be a state. I think the biggest thing that has been said is to keep them all separate, but they do complement each other really well. It's just try not to incorporate all of these into one bill, but each separate bill would complement each other.
Right, I agree. I just wonder why we're not running the separate bills, or if anybody is.
You know, we haven't heard anything yet. That's why we had brought up, I think it was the Indoor Clean Air Act and taxation and T21 that we've heard of. We haven't heard of anyone pursuing flavor bans yet.
We've got a couple more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Steve Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mark, I apologize if we're getting ahead of ourselves, but when it says, ends are not FDA-approved nicotine replacement therapy devices, is that by definition, or is it not necessarily approved?
No, it is by definition. It is not a FDA-approved nicotine replacement therapy.
So I'm to understand that if there is an FDA-approved nicotine replacement therapy, it's not termed an electronic nicotine delivery system?
Correct.
Thank you.
Janet Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of questions. First of all, that data you quoted on vaping?
Yes.
I'd appreciate if you would have it sent out. I don't know, anyone else would like to have it, but I'd certainly like to have it, you know. And my second one was, I recognize it's a little early to have data, you know, and I love data, but I'm just wondering if you've had any kind of input, just general, from districts, on what, if they're, what the impact is now? I mean, they see it rising, lowering, or anything? And secondly, as a piece of that also, I have recently found out that several students in my area have been caught with a vape with drugs, and I wonder how prevalent that is. So if, I know you don't have data, but I'd like to know it, but just any input as to what you've heard.
Ally, do you have any?
We're certainly seeing a rise, I'm sorry. We're certainly, I'm from Spring Hill School District. We're certainly seeing, continuing to see a rise and not a difference between girls or boys, a rise altogether in vaping, and also seeing some THC, which is a marijuana derivative, in vapes as well. We're not seeing, I think the data that Mark shared with us last, I hope that's okay to share, that I think was alarming to me, was we are commonly asked how, why we're focusing on this and not on cigarettes. I mean, that's something that's commonly said, and so I think that the data that he had brought to us, but from the never-used, went from 34.8% to 48.6%, an increase of 39.7% just between 2017 and 2019. So we're seeing a rate of addiction happening much faster. So to answer your question, we're definitely seeing a rise.
Sure.
Thank you, Ally.
Okay, Mark, you want to go on to the policy, or we've got another?
There is national data from the Monitoring the Future Survey that's done by the University of Michigan on behalf of NIDA, and they do show increased rates of marijuana, nicotine, and just flavoring use over time, and this was a 2018 study. They don't have Kansas-specific study, this is a national study.
Okay, well, I would appreciate that data also.
Sure. Sure.
Thank you.
I should have said this, I'm so sorry. I think this was your most important statistic, and I missed it, Mark.
Go ahead.
We've seen an increase of 271% in daily use in our students.
Once again, I'd like to have all that dry. Thank you so much.
Okay, yes. So this was the draft policy that was provided to you in November and is part of your board materials. And the motion is, is that it is moved that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the recommended comprehensive tobacco-free school policy developed by the E-Cigarette Vaping Task Force with the situation requiring action, that the purpose of the E-Cigarette Vaping Task Force was to, oh, okay, that actually isn't the policy. There we go.
There you go.
Let me get there. Okay, so.
We have board members for you. It's page 24 of the agenda.
So the recommendation, students and staff, the use, possession, or promotion of any tobacco product by any student or staff is prohibited in any district facility, in-school vehicles, at-school-sponsored activities, programs, or events, and on-school-owned or operated property at all times. For visitors, the use of any tobacco product by parents, contractors, volunteers, and all other visitors is prohibited in any district facility, in-school vehicles, at-school-sponsored activities, programs, or events, and on-school-owned or operated property at all times. With the definitions of including tobacco product, which means any product that is made from or derived from tobacco or that contains nicotine that is intended for human consumption or is likely to be consumed, whether smoked, heated, chewed, absorbed, dissolved, inhaled, or ingested by any other means, including but not limited to electronic nicotine delivery systems, cigarettes, cigars, pipe tobacco, chewing tobacco, snuff or snooze. Tobacco product also means any component or accessory used in the consumption of a tobacco product, such as filters, rolling papers, pipes, charging devices, cartridges, and any substance used in ends, whether or not they contain nicotine. The definition does not cover FDA-approved nicotine replacement therapies, including transdermal nicotine patches, nicotine gum, and nicotine lozenges. And the definition for electronic nicotine delivery system means any device that delivers a vaporized solution, including nicotine, THC, or any other substance by means of cartridges or other chemical delivery system. Such definitions shall include, but may not be limited to, any electronic cigarette, vape pen, hookah pen, cigar, cigarillo, pipe, or personal vaporizer. Ends are not FDA-approved nicotine replacement therapy devices. Promotion is defined as includes but is not limited to product advertising via branded gear, bags, clothing, any personal articles, signs, structures, vehicles, flyers, or any other materials. Student violations will result in disciplinary actions as outlined by the school district. Disciplinary actions may include parent guardian notification, participation in a tobacco and electronic nicotine delivery systems education program, referral to a cessation program, and/or community service. Student violations may be reported to law enforcement if use or possession is deemed to be illegal.
Okay, so that's the policy, board members. This, because I know when you talk to school districts, a lot of them say they have a policy, and they say that it already includes the nicotine delivery systems. When this is being sent out, is this going to be recommended that school boards take, local school boards take a good, hard look at this and make sure that their policy is inclusive? Because this is quite inclusive and definitive.
Yes, I would be surprised if there are really more than a handful of districts that have this comprehensive policy.
Okay, so that's what we are saying, basically by adopting this, that we really want everybody to take a look at this, because it is probably more comprehensive than most folks have.
Yes, definitely.
So do we have any further questions, or do we have a motion? Okay, we have a couple of questions. Anne Maul.
Thank you. Trying to get my arms around the big picture of where we're going, because, I mean, this, I think, is a start, but as you've said, it's not the finish. So we're working on this definition of who can have it on campus and what that means. And then next month, we'll get disciplinary recommendations, and then we'll work on cessation.
Yes.
What else is left that we can expect to get down the road? Does that pretty much cover it?
I think, those are the, those are really the big ones.
Okay. Because I couldn't think of anything other than the legislation that we're working on, but I thought if there's another big piece that I'm not thinking of.
In terms of, from my perspective of the breadth of school oversight, that really encompasses it from my perspective.
Well, then the other thing is resources. But have we done everything with the resources that we're going to, or is there anybody working on that ongoing?
We continue every month to gather additional resources. A list-serve notification was just sent out last week with updated information and an update on where we are in terms of the work of the task force. And our intent will be to monthly reach out to schools to provide them the latest in resources. And one piece that I meant to bring up earlier was that, and this is from a city level, my understanding is that Goddard, as a city, has implemented a $200 fine for underage individuals who have electronic nicotine delivery systems. It's a $200 fine that can be reduced through community service, enrollment in a cessation program, or the like. So Goddard, in addition to joining the dual lawsuit from a district perspective, is really stepping up from a community perspective to address that.
So they have a cessation program?
Well, that's the, that's the piece.
For underage?
Because I was actually contacted by a representative from Goddard a couple of months ago, who said that they're struggling with where to find cessation programs, and they're right, you know, basically a suburb of Wichita. So that's why the cessation piece is going to take some time, because we have to identify the resources, and then how schools can access them from an equitable perspective.
Jim Porter.
Most school districts, well, a lot of school districts actually do their policies through recommendations from KASB. Have, and they've been part of this task force, right?
Yes.
Is their recommended policy going to reflect what this is? And I know you can't answer for that, but if you've had some discussion.
I would say that, I think it depends on exactly how this board defines what schools should do with the policy.
Okay.
Because my experience with KASB, though it has only been fairly recent, is that they, they don't want to be in the place of asking schools to do beyond what legally the KASB feels comfortable asking them to do.
Okay. Yeah, I see, Michelle, are you going to make the motion?
Oh, I was going to make one comment, but I can make one.
Okay, well, I was going to make the motion unless you wanted to, so, okay. And I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the recommendation, recommended comprehensive tobacco preschool policy development, developed by the E-Cigarette Vaping Task Force.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Michelle Dornbrowski. Michelle has a question or comment.
I guess two comments.
Please, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The first comment was the, I think that what we were talking about in the task force, it was the discipline. They wanted to keep that as local as possible. That was their biggest issue that they brought up. Someone had talked about the, will they carry out that policy? And her biggest issue was the discipline. They wanted to keep that as local as possible. And I would agree with that.
Yeah, I thank you for bringing that up, because, and this was reflected by the superintendents who are on the task force. And whereas they were comfortable with the state board basically passing a policy and then asking schools, from a, at one level, requiring schools to adopt that policy, they were very uncomfortable with us providing, dictating what they did, discipline, from a disciplinary perspective. And we reassured them, or at least I reassured them, that my intent was just simply that our, what we would do regarding discipline would simply be best practices, recommendation, and that would be the extent that the task force would be asking them to go. So thank you for bringing that up, Michelle.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second to approve the recommended comprehensive tobacco-free school policy developed by the E-Cigarette Vaping Task Force. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote then. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, that looks like a nine, zero to me. Okay, thank you very much. So we would certainly encourage you, by any means possible, to get this policy out to school, local schools, certainly unless the support of association, Kansas Association School Board also. I think that would be helpful. And once again, thanks to the members of the task force for coming today and sharing with us this very important information. Hopefully, we'll begin to stem the tide, but obviously, we haven't reached that yet. Still much work to do, as our young people are unfortunately still getting into this, and we wish they wouldn't. But thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Thank you, board, for your leadership.
Board members, we will recess. Just so you know, the IT staff is going to work on our computers over lunch to put the new logo signature block on our emails, so leave your laptops on, I guess is what they would ask that we do. Okay, so we will recess until 1:30 or after our lunch break. Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting back to order for the afternoon session of the December Kansas State Board of Education meeting. And we have such an exciting first agenda item this afternoon, and I see some young people back there also. That makes it so much more fun. So we're going to turn it over to Deputy Commissioner, Mr. Dale Dennis, and you get to lead us through this great event.
This is plenty. Ozen for a blue ribbon. Out of about, what do we got, Randy, 1,000 elementary schools roughly? Six out of 1,000. And I'm sorry to say, this award goes to those who make significant progress in the closing the achievement gap and raising student achievement. That's what the measurement's all about. And two of them couldn't be here, one had a death in the family, and one was having a board meeting and couldn't leave. And they were over at DeSoto. I want to give them proper credit. I believe it was Clear Creek Elementary School in DeSoto, and they were unable to be here today. And the other one was Lake Mary Elementary School in Blue Valley. So we have four great ones here, and that have really closed the achievement graph, the gap, and increased student achievement. And the first one, it's kind of interesting, there's kind of quite a range in the got this award. And there's a lot of work goes into this. It takes a collaborative staff to do this. And the first one is Central Plains Elementary. That's in USD 112. That's out around Claflin. And Jane Ozer is the principal there, great educator. And Jane, you want to come on up a minute? And I asked Jane, I said, "How many communities and towns do you have in your district?" It's similar to Shawnee Mission. Shawnee Mission's got 12 or 13, I think. You have any you've got in your community?
Oh, a bunch. I could name them all. There's just so many small ones.
A lot of small schools.
We cover five counties.
But they've had some challenges in recent history? Is that fair?
Yeah.
And they've done a whale of a job in stepping up. But the Central Plains Elementary School in Claflin, Kansas, Jane, we're glad you're here and let you share with us.
Yes.
Your great wisdom.
Yeah, sure will.
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Well, thank you for having us.
And looks like some other.
Yes, I have my second-grade teacher, Shay Sheehy, and two of our second graders. This is Joe Kermer and Kendall Gardner. They're going to demonstrate some of the things we do with our reading program. But I just wanted to share a few things about our school. Can I get that to click for me? There we go. We were a pre-K4 building last year when we were awarded this award. We closed a building in June and made our building then this year a pre-K6. We consolidated in 2010-11. I stood before some of you as a superintendent at that time consolidating. And so we formed Central Plains Elementary in 1112. And I'll tell you, it was starting from scratch, bringing new staff together, coming up with new, the programs we thought were best for kids. And I'll tell you what, this staff hashed it out in such a short amount of time, because we know these guys are why we're here and on. We got it going. We do cover five counties. We do a lot of transporting of kids, 583 square miles, and we're mainly rural, based on farming and oil. And then these are just some of the signs you see when you come in our building. Remember kindergarten? Come in, we are awesome, because we know we're awesome, and then be the reason someone smiles today. But that's just a few of the things we have. But I'll tell you what, the two things that we feel why we received the blue ribbon is relationships. We are a family. These are our second, this is our second family, and we know every kid, because there's only 193 of them in there. We know them all, and we know their parents, don't we? And we get to know them, and we make sure their basic needs are met, and we do that every day. If we aren't getting coats and hats and getting glasses for some of them, taking some to appointments, we wash clothes, we do it all, because they have to have their basic needs met before we can get anything in their brains. Morning greetings, I mean, before kids come in, our bus drivers are phenomenal. They're the first ones that greet our kids. Then we come through the door, and we have greeters at the door telling everybody good morning. Before they get to breakfast, they probably run into two or three more adults. These kids probably get seven to 10 greetings before they even get to the gym in the morning. Then we go to the gym, and we have some fun, because they get there early. They get there at 7:30. Our school doesn't start till 8:15. So we have games in the gymnasium, where they do cooperative activities together. We get out the basketballs, and we shoot balls around, and we dribble, and do all kinds of things. We have homework help for any kid that needs help in the morning for their homework, because we know a homework doesn't get done at home, and we don't punish kids because of that. We have good communication with parents, both ways, through social media, parent letters, we still do parent letters, and all teachers are awesome at communicating with our parents. We give our kids wild coupons. We catch them doing great things, and try and pump them up and build them up each and every day. And then our second thing we have, we feel, is our curriculum and the rigor behind it. We're blessed to have a four-year-old preschool program. It is play-based. Those kids get in there, and it's all social, getting to know each other, working together. All-day kindergarten. At first, when we started this many years ago, I thought, why do we keep doing more and more? But now I see why. We've got to get them in there early and get them the help they need. We do MTSS reading. We've been formally trained. It's implemented across the board in our building. And then Pathways to Reading is what these little guys are going to share with us today. That's a program that, it's to teach the core components of reading, the phonemic awareness, the phonics, the fluency, vocabulary comprehension. And it's so fun to walk into the classrooms, because every teacher does it in kindergarten through second. Those kids that still need it, get it in third and fourth grade and all. So they're going to share with you a little bit of what that looks like with Pathways to Reading.
Okay, so what Pathways to Reading is, it's a mnemonic device that we use to teach our kids. Pathways to Reading is a mnemonic device that we use to teach our kids the basics of phonics and fluency. So we teach them in a town. This is called Val Town. And the reason is, it has a story that goes along with it, and we want the kids to connect that in their brains the whole time, so they can remember what they're doing. So we start up here at the top, and this is kind of Smile Hill. We go down the valley, and then we go up here to a different hill over here. So as they're doing this, though, we're training their brain to always spot the vowel whenever they're looking for words, or coming to a new word that they need to know how to attack. So what they're going to do now is they're going to walk you through Val Town a little bit, and then we'll do a couple more little activities that we do for Val Town here. So if I hold it up here, can, if I point here?
E. E. Eh. Eh. Ah. Uh. Ah. Uh. Oh. Uh. Uh. You. Ow. Ow. Oi. Oi. Er. Eh, 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 ah, uh, ah, ah, oh, uh, uh, ay, u, ow, ow, oi, oi, er, 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 ar, or, out the door.
Okay, so, you know... Phonics is difficult, because we have five vowels, sometimes six, but they have, all of these vowels have a lot more sounds. So, with this device here that we teach them, that they can just, that work on attacking a word rather than working so hard so they can't comprehend something new. So, some other things that we do is, we teach a lot with nonsense words. Sometime, we start out with nonsense words, because every word to them in the beginning, it is a nonsense word. They do not know what it is. So, whenever we start out, we just start with nonsense words. So, you know, we might, we have books for the kids. We just point to a word, and then first, they go through, and then they spot the vowel. And if they, if they can figure out what that vowel is, then they can attack the word. So, what about this one? Spot your vowel first. What's the vowel?
Paffs.
Paffs. Okay, so we, like I said, we start out with nonsense words. Try this one here. This one.
Krill.
Krill. And then, as we go, and as they have learned these vowels, then we can, we could become, go on to more multi-syllable words, things that are, could be kind of difficult here. So, this is a multi-syllable word. Try this one.
Slumber.
Slumber. Okay, so I'm going to scoot. Okay, so try this one right here.
Creeper.
Creeper. So, these are words we just practice with. And then, as they, as they practice words all, I mean, and they become more familiar with spotting the vowel and attacking the word, then eventually, that fluency and that comprehension, it seems to fall, and they can, they can work more on the, I mean, just comprehending text. So, this piece for us has been a huge success.
And our teachers are real good about, we double our students, so we keep track of kids, and we track, we meet every so often and regroup kids, and just keep working together as a team. And we have seen some tremendous growth. We continue to have student improvement teams, where we sit and visit and talk about things. We can help kids that have strengths, and other kids that need help with some other areas. We work together, and we do it with fidelity. And like I said, I'm blessed. I've got a staff that has bought into a lot of these things, but the buy-in has been because we didn't throw it out, and we talked about it prior. We said, "Do you think we can get this going?" And everybody bought in before we went out and, you know, started training and all, because it was a lot of training for this staff. And then, just the last thing, I already clicked on that one, I guess I'm going backwards, is USD 112 believes in every student, every chance, and every day. And we want to thank you again for allowing us to be here this afternoon. Thank you.
They'll stay a little bit. We'll have some pictures here. Next is Corinth Elementary School, Shawnee Mission 512, and their principal's Chris Low. And Chris, where are you at? I think Chris may have some dignitaries with him also.
Thank you.
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Especially your two sidekicks.
They're why we're here.
Absolutely.
You may have a handout.
Yeah, you should have a handout of this presentation. First of all, thank you so much for allowing us to come in this afternoon. It's an honor to be here. Chris Low, principal at Corinth Elementary. We are one of 34 elementary schools in the Shawnee Mission School District located in Prairie Village. We've got 560 students. I've got a fifth grader here, Carter Wild, and sixth grader Tori Murphy. They are student, site council representatives, so we thought this was a perfect opportunity for them to come and represent. Carter's going to nudge me when it's five minutes, so I don't go over. So, if you see him nudging me, that's why. Everything you're going to hear, we believe, is tied to the vision that this board has set. Last year in Shawnee Mission, we went through a strategic planning process, and so, we came out with three objectives in the Shawnee Mission School District, and that is that we're working towards every student having a personalized learning plan that supports them being college and career-ready, and having interpersonal skills important to life. So, I think the things you're going to hear that we feel we're doing at Corinth to help students be successful, and that helped us earn the blue ribbon award, ties to the strategic plan and the vision of this board. The first thing we did, this is my fifth year as principal at Corinth Elementary, we took two years and updated our mission, vision, and values as a building. It took two years, because we felt it was important to get feedback from our community, business members, parents, and even students. I don't know if they, do you guys remember taking a survey about things you find important?
I think so.
We think so. Good, good. Two years ago, that's a long time. So, we came together as a staff and a community in a, in a building to figure out what we value. So, that two-year process, we think, set the foundation for the things that follow here. What is it we believe that contributes to success for Corinth? We believe, echoing what you just heard, building relationships, relationships with the students, the teachers, the community, and the kids. This starts by every kindergartner gets a personal home visit from me before every year. We usually have about 80 students. I love this, because it sets the tone for positive school year, in my opinion. I make the first impression, and hopefully, it's a positive one. Lydia, Lydia enjoyed it. And I bring a personalized note from their teacher that they're going to have for kindergarten, and that personalized note has a link on it that the parents can scan, and it's a video of their teacher they're going to have, kind of in action, showing them the classroom. So, we think that sets the tone for building a positive relationship. Being, next year will be the sixth year this tradition has been going on. I have students that'll wait out in the front yard in lawn chairs. Blocks will go out and put lemonade stands on the corner. So, again, it just sets the tone, in my opinion, for a great opportunity to build relationships. The other things, again, that we do to build a community, we are a PBIS school. We do a building-wide positive behavior support system. We call them dragon tickets. What can you buy dragon tickets with? What can you use those dragon tickets for?
Helping a teacher.
Help a teacher.
Special lunch with you.
Special lunch with me. We call it the VIP lunch. What else can you do with dragon tickets?
Eating in the classroom.
You can eat in the classroom.
Sometimes, they have little treasure boxes in the classroom.
Treasure box. So, again, that's a K through six, building-wide positive support plan. We do two students the day, every day, on the announcements. I call two students that teachers have nominated. You can see a picture here. This is a kindergartner, Bo. We do two students the day, and it starts my day off on a perfect tone, because I delivered the positive note to them, a sticker and a pencil, and then, obviously, anyone that sees that sticker throughout the day is going to give them a lot of positive attention, because they were, out of 560 kids, they were, there are two students every day that we, we recognize. We do a quarterly PBIS assembly, where we recognize two students from every grade level for being respectful, on task, acting safe and responsible. We make it kind of a big deal. What do you do with the PBIS assembly if you win? What do you win?
A shirt.
The shirt. It's official green dragon roar shirt. And again, two students from every grade level. Get that every quarter. And again, just finding ways to recognize positive behavior. We also recognize every quarter, one student that was caught roaring. Here's some pictures of this. Again, this is a picture of some of the things you can earn with our building-wide dragon tickets. The picture in the middle, those are the students that won it the first quarter. There's a lot of smiles there. Again, it's a big deal to wear that shirt, and it's been a tradition now, because on the PBIS assembly days, students that have won that award before will wear those shirts. So, it's kind of fun to see 560 kids, and you just start to see more and more green every quarter. And then, the spirit award, we hand out the spirit flag to a classroom every quarter that's been caught roaring. That's our mascot Rory, by the way. What else do we believe that contributes to success at Corinth? Every classroom has a buddy classroom. They meet at least once a quarter to build relationships. Typically, five minutes, okay. Man, that goes fast. Typically, it's sixth grade with kindergarten, fifth grade with first, but we have buddy classrooms. We do dragon dens. That's a vertical team. Every adult in our building, from custodians to parish to the nurse, has a vertical group of kids, two kindergarten, two first grade, two second grade. We meet every month and do, have activities, again, focusing on relationships. Our kids, do you guys like dragon dens? Who's your dragon den leader?
Mrs. Rex.
Mrs. Rex, our reading specialist. Who's your dragon den leader?
Mrs. Rhoad.
Mrs. Rhoad, a fifth grade teacher. Finally, jump-up day. That's an activity that, in order to smooth the transition from year to year, kindergartens get, every student gets to meet their teacher that they're going to have for the following year. So, kindergarten through fifth graders, before they leave for the summer, they meet their teacher that they're going to have the next year and their classmates. They spend time in that classroom. That way, when they go off to summer, they come back already knowing who that teacher's going to be and who their classmates are going to be. We think that eases some of the transition. As a staff, we meet once a week. We recognize each other, because teaching is hard, so we want to recognize everybody, because everyone works really hard to be, do the best they can for the kids. Our PTA is absolutely fabulous. We believe the support that we get from our PTA continues to help us be a successful school. Obviously, we, our professional learning community school, our teachers meet once a week to focus on our standards, unpacking those standards, creating common assessments, using the data from those assessments to guide our instruction, and we have a very strong building leadership team. Finally, you'll see up here, we feel that those things that we're implementing are being successful, because the trend that we've had over the past several years, our students continue to increase on the percentage of students scoring at a level three or four on our math and ELA assessments. So, we contribute to those factors that I just shared with you. Really quickly, some of the things that we're doing at Corinth. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Did you have any questions for the students?
We're going to get some questions in a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Take your picture, protect the kids.
All right.
All right, Chris. Okay, isn't this fun? Okay, and our next one is, big blue ribbon school was Catherine Loughlin-McCarthy Elementary School in USD 489 in Hayes. They had to get up for breakfast. Okay, right? And their principal is Vicki Kyle. Vicki?
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. It is a pleasure to be here. It's always exciting to be recognized for all of the good things that your school does, and so, I'm very excited to be here today. As you said, we came from western Kansas, so it was kind of an early trip, but not too bad. So, anyway, you know, the question that they sent out to us is, "What is it that you're doing to go ahead and be responsive and keep being successful as a school?" And quite frankly, everything that you're hearing today is very familiar. I think there's so many thing, good things going along in education nowadays, that implementing new things, it's just wonderful what we are doing. The one thing that I wanted to point out is that Loughlin is relatively a new school. This is our 30th year. And so, I really attribute a lot of the success that we have now to the success that they've always had, and to the standard of excellence that school's always been taught by administration and by teachers that have been there. Quite frankly, I think our success hinges on our teachers. We do have a great staff that really puts a lot of work into it, a lot of dedication, and a lot of passion into what they do. And so, to really kind of illustrate what I'm talking about, we picked out a couple of things that we wanted to visit with you about. And today, I brought along two of my teachers that have actually been there for 30 years. They've been there the whole time that Loughlin has been open. I have with me Mrs. Patsy Thorell. She's in our first and second grade. And I have Mrs. Sonia Hurrell, who is in our fourth and fifth grade. So, I'm going to step aside and kind of let them give you some of the things that they have valued through 30 years that have carried us forward as we go from year to year, so...
Patsy?
Thank you. Thank you for having us today. One thing that I did want to touch on, that kind of, I think, explains some of the excess of Loughlin School, is the fact that we're a looping school, where we do stay with our students and our classrooms for two years. And so, I teach kindergarten and first grade, and so, I have those kindergarten students all through this year, right now, and then I will continue with that same group of students next year as first graders. And really, there is just so much success to be said about that. I know at the time, years ago, when you're a first-year teacher, and our administrator came to us and said, "What do you think about this looping concept?" And I was thinking, "I just am barely learning this curriculum, and then I need to do another curriculum as well." And I have to tell you, it is just such a successful system that we use at Loughlin, and I feel like that really attributes to our success in our building. You are able to build those relationships with those students, which so much of our school day is building relationships with students, building relationships with the families in our building, and then that carries on throughout the next few years. I know I have students that I see in the hallway that I had several years ago, and there's not a moment that they don't pass you in the hallway, that they are able to make connection with them, and they have connection with you. Also, it helps that following year, you just hit the ground running in first grade. I know the needs of those students. I know where we left off. I know what we need to do to keep moving forward with those students. And really, they know the routine of the classroom. They know your expectations, and so, you're really able to just be a step ahead that second year, and so, it is such a positive thing. And then, the relationships that we're able to build with parents and the camaraderie that we're able to develop with those parents, where they're comfortable with us, we're like a family, and they know us, and they trust us after those, you know, those two years together. And so, it's just a real positive for our building, and so, I think that really attributes to some of our success. I have a number of parents that volunteer in my classroom. We have parents that are involved throughout the building, and I think that is just that factor of being with those students for the two years for kindergarten, first grade, and then we do second, third grade, and fourth, fifth grade. So, that is something that kind of, I think, really sums up kind of how we're able to achieve this for Loughlin School, and I'm very proud to be a part of it, and appreciate you having us. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sonia Hurrell, and I teach fourth grade one year and then fifth grade the next, and thank you for having us here and for us being a blue ribbon school. That's an awesome achievement, as everyone knows, that's won it and has won it before. I think one thing that sets us apart, along with the looping, is kind of how we evaluate data, you know, and that's maybe not as catchy as some fun stuff and all that, but it's really necessary, and we do that all the time. And I taught three years prior to being at Loughlin, 30 years. And, you know, and I first taught, I taught it at a regular schools, regular school, you have them, you know, all year long, and then you get a new class. And I was a really new teacher, obviously, very new. And so, you know, you're thinking, "What do you need to teach?" You look at the curriculum, and, you know, I hope you have a good lesson, and you give it, you give the lesson to the whole class, and you hope most of them catch it, and, you know, you evaluate them, and most of them catch it, and some don't, and you kind of move on. And, you know, that's kind of what I think people think of teachers, you know, when, if you don't teach at all, if you've never been a teacher, that's kind of what you think. Teachers teach the class. At Loughlin, I don't really feel like we do that. Gosh, we do everything we can to teach every student where they're at. I don't think a decision is made by me anytime when I'm planning, and when I'm thinking about, even, even day-to-day, what I'm going to do the next day. It's not, I don't think about anything except, "Who didn't catch what I got? Who needs to learn it a different way? Who needs to play a game to this? Who needs, who needs to have a manipulative for math? You know, who needs to meet in a small group? Who could be partnered with whom? You know, how can I deliver it differently? What do I do that maybe I can change, so somebody else can understand it?" We're looking at data constantly, you know, whether it's through an assessment at the end, or just a formative assessment, or just asking them questions, you know, and I think to be an effective teacher, you know, you really do have to have like a whole bag of effective strategies and instructional techniques. And I feel like at Loughlin, every single teacher does that. You know, gone is the day where we're all just delivering the same instruction to a class of 23 students, and, you know, we walk away, hopefully, they got it, or they didn't. You know, it's just, we're constantly just looking at data, looking at how they're doing, looking, looking at something they did, looking at, looking at a problem, looking at something something they did, looking at, looking at a problem, looking at something they put on seesaw, listening to a video of them talking about what they learned and deciding, you know, "How can we reach them differently tomorrow if they need us? Or how can we explain it differently?" So, I feel like that is a huge, a huge reason why we are really successful. And you think every teacher should know that, you know? I mean, you're a teacher, you're there to teach children. You're there to reach every single child. But, you know, you get caught up in, you know, just trying to get a lesson taught. Sometimes it's hard to reach every child. And I feel like at O'Laughlin School, you know, we have eighteen teachers, and that's all they do all day. That's all they do all day, is they think of effective ways to help to reach another child, this child, a new student that comes in, somebody that's struggling, a child who's gifted, you know, needs more. Like I said, I don't make any decisions without, I have so many notes in my lesson plan book, that is, I don't even really need a book anymore, like a big page, just with a, like a flowchart, you know? This group goes here, that group does this, that group does this, I do this with this group. But ten minutes, we do this, because honestly, that's kind of how we teach at our school. We're just constantly thinking more effective ways to deliver information and, you know, impart knowledge and help them to, to understand what we're trying to, to teach them. Another thing is our reading program. You know, we started as a whole-language school when we first opened. I don't teach reading personally right now. I teach math and science and writing, that part of the ELA. But, reading has always been a big, big part of, what's a part? We started as a whole-language school thirty years ago. You know, we've kind of, we're in the writing workshop, reading and writing workshop with Lucy Cockins, which isn't really that much off from, from whole language. It's, it really is another format of whole language in a sense. You know, reading has been kind of the crux of every single thing that we do at our school, reading and really writing instruction. And I feel like that's probably been what's made us really, really successful with our state scores also, because we do, we pour so much into our reading programs. We do them with fidelity. You know, everything, everything that we do at our school is also research-based. I mean, I can say that just because I've been through a lot of different programs. You know, you're, there's thirty years, programs kind of come and go and trends come and go. We don't just pick what's out of the wind or on Pinterest, you know? We actually have research-based. And there's nothing wrong with Pinterest, but, you know, we have research-based strategies and, you know, we're, we're reading instructional, you know, resources to say, "Hey, you know, what, what is the best way to teach this?" And, and like I said, reading has probably been, probably where our biggest priority has, has, was laid, like I said. And then writing as well. So, I think that's what's made us, you know, effective. Like I said, I taught before O'Laughlin School and it was a great school. And, you know, I was an okay teacher, but oh my goodness, you know, I'm not even, I, when you came to O'Laughlin, it's not even in the same, you know, ballpark as far as the expectations of, of what we expect from our students, what I expect from myself as a teacher, you know, and, and how I want to make those children successful and want to grow up and be what they want to be, you know? Grow up and get to choose what path they want to be and help them make that decision and help them along the way. And also have fun along the way, too, you know, and build relationships with them. And we can only do that by having them for two years, because when you have someone for two years, it is like family. I mean, when they leave me in fifth grade, I don't get to see them in the hallway. I don't ever see them again, some of them. You know, if I don't go to a high school event, I don't ever see those children again until maybe they're thirty and walking down the street. And they still remember things that I did or things I think, that I said they thought was funny or, you know, experiences we had together. And you don't really get that when you're with them just for one year as much. You, you know, you get them, you have them for tiers. You know, you, you've put time in with them and so have they put time in with us.
Like I said, we have a great group of leaders in our school or teachers. And these are actually two of our teacher leaders. And they're really helping us develop, may I say, the next generation of teacher leaders in our school. You know, you can almost see by age group, I hate to say that, but we do, they are instrumental in helping us instill that, that passion and that love for education and for showing, modeling to the other teachers, this is what we need to be doing to keep strong in our school. So, I really do appreciate these two among all the other teachers I have. So...
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and next on the list, who had significant achievement levels is Holy Rosary Weah Catholic School in Bucyrus. And Bucyrus, and the principal there is Nick Antista. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Bucyrus is right north of Lewisburg and just about the Johnson County line, but not quite.
Right, one mile across.
One mile.
County line, yeah.
Yep. So, anyway, Nick, we'll turn it over to you.
All right.
Thank you.
I could just show the Shawnee Mission one again, at least, you know?
Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you very much. It's great to be here. I think this is it.
I think we're the next one underneath that.
We're not. Right underneath. This one here. Thanks for your patience, everybody.
There we are.
There we go. Well, thanks for having us. I'm Nick Antista, principal of Holy Rosary. I'm with Lee Gruss today, one of our teacher leaders and our stream coordinator. It's an honor to be here and an honor to be with all of our fellow schools who are with us today. They've said a lot of the same things that we would say. I mean, it's, you break it down, a lot of it's about community, kids feeling loved, kids feeling known. Our kids are known within our building by multiple teachers, multiple students. And I think that allows us to raise the bar and they just seem to always find a way to jump right over it. We have a great teaching staff. I think a key is retention. Retention's important. You can hit the ground running as soon as the year starts. You know, we've, we've implemented things. I'm sure lots of other schools have as well. Growth mindset, MTSS through TASN, that was a great consortium. And we like to empower kids every day to take risks, to fail, and learn from failure. And I brought Mrs. Gruss here with us today, and she's gonna explain a little bit more about what we do in the classrooms and more importantly, what our future looks like at Holy Rosary.
Hi, I'm Lee Gruss, and I've taught thirty-one years and I'm the stream...
Could you go ahead and move over to the microphone? There we go.
Okay, so I'm gonna sing Britney now that I'm by a microphone. But, so, stream stands for science, technology, religion, engineering, art, and math. And so, I have the most awesome job ever. I'm the stream facilitator and PBL consultant for our school. So, I work with the students and the teachers. And one of the biggest things, I think, for being present right now and keeping where we are and moving into the future is empowering our teachers and supporting them. So, that's a big part of my job. I had a fifth-grade teacher walk up to me the other day after quarter and a half being there. And she's like, "Okay, we're doing narrative fiction. What would be a cool way for us to present it using technology?" I'm like, "Podcasts." And she's like, "Ah!" So, then she came in and we worked something out that she's gonna present with the students. So, we're, we're doing the standards in the present and we're building into those soft skills that students are going to continue to need in the future. So, one of our things is being student-directed, going high up on that chart of student-directed and being relevant out here. And there's a lot of activities we do. Here's our green screen that we are using and the students are doing a weather forecast. But, we really push as much as we can, even though sometimes it's difficult as a teacher, because the time gets in the way. But, we push to let them make the choices, discussion, very student-involved. And we're getting so much better at it as we go. And so, student-directed is a big piece. And then we're going for rigor and relevance. And so, as we look at relevance, there are four tiers of levels of different types of PBLs. And so, we want to get to the transdisciplinary, which is the farthest one over. And that's where relevance becomes unpredicted situations and built on where the students are at. So, every student you get, every different class you get, something is gonna be different, relevant to them, even in the situations in which they live in. And so, we're trying to present our information to our students, so they get direct instruction, but they also get choice, but they also see it as relevant to doing something. We did "The Boy Who Harnessed the Wind" with fifth grade. We ended up having a speaker come in from Mulaway and talk with the students. We're a Catholic school. She gave us all a picture of them. We pray for them every day. Then we just made a book on storyjumper.com, which we dedicated to them and are raising money for them. So, that's relevant for the students. So, they bought into that. They were into the book. We made wind turbines. We changed the blades on them. They got to go outside. They got to stay inside. Half the multimeters didn't work, but we still figured it out. But, the relevance piece was there, because it was important to their learning and in their future with wind turbines being kind of the thing. So, we really work on our relevance. So, problem and project-based learning. So, these cute guys made an ori. And so, with the sixth-grade classroom, they were studying revolutions and rotations. And so, I said, "Okay, you're gonna make an ori." Gave them a couple examples. And then these guys went all off on their own. And you can see the sun over here. And then they brought in their robotic device from home. And then they, you can stand up and rotate it around. But, it was based on a problem that they were given, which went along with their science. So, our, our future thing here is really integrating, but doing that special thing of keeping with the standards and keeping with that traditional piece that's important, but continuing for them to think, to problem-solve, to communicate, to work together, to get frustrated. These three guys, this one, you can't see where I'm pointing, but the one boy with the to-do list, he was just like, "Ah!", all over the place. And the other guys are a little. And just working with them as a team and building their strengths that each of them have and to appreciate the other person's strength, to me, that was just a powerful moment for them. And then, I'd like to say to everybody, happy Computer Science Week. Woohoo! So, it is Computer Science Week. And so, we're really, you know, using technology. Technology, as I explained to the kids and teachers at the beginning of the year, isn't necessarily a computer. It's also a pencil sharpener. It's a wheel. So, technology is anything that improves the situation. So, we try to keep that in mind with technology. But, when we are using digital devices, we're focusing on being producers, not just consumers. Kids consume technology like nobody's business, social networking, Fortnite, et cetera. But, we want them to produce. So, our fifth-grade class, again, as I just said, they produced, they made a book and gave it out to be sold into the community. Our kindergarten, using an app called Puppet, made a puppet show and shared it with the preschoolers on Halloween safety. So, they're continually producing. When they come in, we talk about Google Docs, G Suite, slides, Google Forms, in way of producing something to help somebody else and using those skills. So, these young kids right here are doing coding. And the interesting thing about this, this is kindergarten, and this Kubo is an excellent coding device we used. And so, then the eighth grade came in yesterday afternoon. And I just wanted to show them this, so they can connect the words. So, they connect coding to the programming. Once you put it in the robot and the robot moves around. And so, then I said, "Okay, make up a function," where they had to take and put everything on one code and that would be a function. And we talked about length of coding, et cetera, et cetera. And so, this one young man said to me, "Mrs. Gruss, is it really important to be able to know how to code for a job?" And I thought, "Man, that's an awesome question, because you're, you're present in what we're doing now, but you're also preparing yourself and you're future-ready." And I said, "You don't have to be a computer scientist, but yes, you're gonna have to be aware of programming, but more so perseverance and the problem-solving and figure things out." So, then with the eighth grade, we were gonna go to Kena, which is a block building programming and do something. And they're like, "Let's keep doing this." And they ended up programming and making all kinds of things happen and using functions. And then we were able to connect it to the meaning of words that they hear. So, being producers is our big technology theme.
We truly believe every child's a masterpiece of God, creative precision with a specific purpose. So, we do take time each day to become closer to Christ and work in our religious studies as well. And that, along with, with other methods, helps to grow our community, keep us strong. And we appreciate all their kids, how our kids do and how hard they work and our entire school community. And we're proud to be here today. Thank you so much.